Just a reminder to silence your cell phones, please. And second, the meeting documents are next to Commissioner Bender if you would like something in writing and Robert's not here. So you're Robert. If you need a listening device, Carol will be able to help you with that. Item number one in routine business is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion on a second, any changes or additions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes. Item two is to approve the commission meeting minutes from February 28th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion on a second, any changes or corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes. Bills to be paid of $731,840 and 34 cents.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion on a second, any comments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
Significant amounts this week to armor correctional, about a little over $300,000. And obviously there are other bills as well, but that's the most significant.
Thank you, Jeff. We have a motion and a second to approve the bills, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes. Item four is an annual report for the Minnehaha County as of year end 2016. And that is filed. Item five is personnel action. Item A is to consider a motion to approve routine personnel.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Good morning, Jen.
Good morning.
Item B is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for March 2017.
Yeah. Good morning, Commissioner Jen Otts from Human Resources. We have one significant anniversary this month, Beau Bluen. He is a senior deputy public defender in the public defender's office and he's been with us for five years.
Thank you. Item C, recorded volunteers in the county departments for February 2017.
In February, we had over 275 volunteers that gave their time in a number of different departments, including the museum, the state's attorney's office, public defender's office, sheriff's office, human services, juvenile detention center, emergency management, and at Safe Home. So we just want to take this opportunity to thank them for all the hours that they generously donate to our many departments here.
It's a wonderful commitment and certainly cost savings for the county, so thank you for bringing that to our attention. Item D is special commission action to authorize the use of salary savings in the public defender's office to hire four to six summer interns.
Yes, we have this listed as a special commission action because technically departments can hire part-time budget if it comes out of their, or part-time staff rather, if it comes out of their part-time budget. The public defender's office doesn't have an actual part-time budget, but Tracy feels due to turnover within the department and filling a position at a lower level, she's going to have the salary savings to cover the cost of the interns. And I know she's committed to working within her budget to fund these intern positions. Additionally, she is here today if you have any questions for her.
So anyone have any questions for Jen or for Tracy? Commissioner Iverter?
Just a comment that we talked about this, I believe it was last week or two weeks ago in our board, the public defenders board, and encouraged Tracy to move forward with this. We have done it in the past.
Any other comments, questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion on a second to approve the special commission action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six is an application for abatement. Olivia?
We have one representing the assessment freeze RDID 18261 for 2016 property taxes at $832.95.
Thank you. Do you, does anyone have any questions for Olivia? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion on a second to approve the abatement, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes. Item seven is a notice and request for a 60-day notice from Sioux Falls CASA program for their intent to vacate county space at 220 West Sixth Street. Item B is to authorize the county auditor to post notice of hearing to consider carryover supplements from the 2016 budget to the 2017 budget.
Authorize auditor to post.
Is there a second?
Second.
Good morning, Kim.
Good morning. We're here just this morning just to request your authorization to post notice of a budget hearing to consider supplements from the 2016 budget to the 2017 budget. They include items in the general fund and special revenue funds.
Anyone else have any questions? Motion?
We have a motion.
And a second, I believe, for the first reading to authorize the publishing of the notice on March 28th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes. Next item is the opportunity for public comment. If anyone has any public comments that they would like.
Number eight.
Hard to get good help, isn't it? Item number eight is a first reading and the authorization for the county auditor to publish notice of hearing on March 28th to consider a petition to vacate a private road right of way. Sorry.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning, Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. This petition came to us from the highway department and as you can see, it's just a portion of the highway as they did a realignment for the intersection. So this is just to publish the hearing date and we can go forward.
Anyone have any questions for Kevin? If not, we have a motion to publish.
So moved.
Second. Okay. We have a motion to publish the hearing on March 28th to consider a petition to vacate a private road right of way. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes.
Commissioner?
Yes?
Just a point of clarification on item B, number seven, the auditors posting the hearing, that hearing was actually March 21st and you said March 28th. My motion was for March 21st.
Sheesh.
So just letting you know.
Thank you.
Right.
So noted. Again, we're back to opportunities for public comment. If anyone has any public comments about an item that's not on the agenda, we would like to hear from you. You do need to identify yourself and your address, please.
Hi, good morning. My name is Tom Wurtzma. I am from Brandon, 26299 McCarty Road. And I was here approximately seven weeks ago inquiring about ordinances with the racetrack. And at the time, I think the follow-up was the state was going to be contacted to determine the definition of grandfathering or something to that extent. I have not heard anything back. I didn't know if there were any updates, if the state had responded or exactly what the status was.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I think I talked to Scott Anderson about this issue and I guess I would suggest visiting with the planning department. Scott's not here, but the fact is that the grandfathering thing does have some limitations. And so I really don't want to comment any further, but I think, and you can certainly call me as well, my business card is in our office over there just around the corner. Give me a call later.
Okay, will do.
Same here, Jim.
Okay. Thank you for the follow-up.
No, thank you for coming to remind us, we'll follow up with Scott again to make sure it gets taken care of.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? If not, we'll go to item number 10, which is a public hearing to consider an application for a special event on sale liquor license for Nelson's Landing at Falls Landing on April 8th at Blue Haven Barn and Gardens. Olivia?
Yes, we received an application from Nelson's Landing doing business as Falls Landing. They will be catering a wedding specifically for on-sale liquor at the Blue Haven Barn and Gardens on April 8th, 2017. I've received no complaints or concerns from sheriff's office, state's attorney, or planning department, so I would recommend approval.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone who would like to make any comments about the application, first we'll take the positive side of approval. If there is anyone who wants to speak against the application, they can do that also.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve their application for liquor license.
I'll second it, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
I don't know much about Blue Haven Barn and Gardens and probably should do a little bit more homework on that one, but it seems like they hold events there in that whoever's renting it needs to get the liquor licenses. Is that, is there a reason why they wouldn't have their own liquor license? I mean.
I don't think that they have that enough events yet. Now, a liquor license is different than the beer and wine, I believe, and so I think that's typically what they, which they have, I believe. A liquor license would cost some tens of thousands. They're south of Wild Water West, stone's throw from Wild Water West.
Okay. And I know how it works for a liquor license within a municipality, remind me how it works in the county, I'm still learning these things.
It depends on the nearest municipality to that location. So for example, the Crooks Gun Club would have to get a Sioux Falls rate, which is like $200,000 even though they're the Crooks Gun Club. Sherman, I think they, it's $1,500. Anybody near Sherman wants to drink, it's cheaper.
Okay.
City Attorney, want to add anything?
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Barth.
How come you know all this?
You know a lot about that.
No comment. Any other comments? Any other questions? We have a motion to approve, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes. Item number 11 is a briefing from emergency management on the rural fire ambulance and search and rescue report. Lynn DeYoung.
Good morning, Commissioners, Lynn DeYoung, Emergency Management. It's kind of hard to follow that, be after that one, but thank you for having me today. Behind me, I've got the group of rural fire rescue and EMS agencies representing the communities of Baltic, Brandon, on the fireside anyways, representing the communities of Baltic, Brandon, Colton, Crooks, Dell Rapids, Hartford, Humboldt, Lyons, Renner, Sioux Falls, Split Rock, and Valley Springs. So all of these guys are volunteers, they've taken their time off today to come give you a briefing on activities from 2016 and provide the community a look at what they do. So, let's see here. So as I said, the departments that are represented today are those on the list here. They're all volunteer agencies that are ready to respond to their communities in times of need. I think this is the first time we've done this report, but based on feedback from the commission, I think it'll be important as we move forward to show the citizens of the county and the community what type of services they provide and the hours that they provide ready to go in times of emergencies or other incidents. So just a comparison between both the fire and EMS. So the red line for the last two years is a total number of calls that the rural fire rescue agencies responded to out in the county. So as you can see, in 2014, it was at that 1,934 and today, or 2016, it was 2014, or excuse me, 2014 calls that the rural fire rescue responded to. And just in comparison for the EMS, in 2014, they had just a little over 2,000 calls. In 2015, they had that, it was a little bit unique, but they had the same number of calls as a year, so 2015 calls. And then last year, they dipped, excuse me, to about 1,870 calls. So that's just a comparison to let folks know what's going on out there. I don't think, and we've had discussions with the providers on the EMS side and we'll get that and get to that in a little bit, but on the EMS side, that dipped to 1,869. I don't think that should be a concern, or I don't think it leads to any trend, so to speak. I think overall, we'll see that trend line continuing to go up as the population ages within the county and some of those other things are being called upon. And I think that'll be representative, if you look at the orange line, so to speak, you'll see a nice, probably a 3%, I didn't do the figures, but a 3% to 5% increase between 14 and 16. You'll see a nice little trend line as we go up in the future, so. By agencies, some of our agencies run a lot of calls. So the lines you see below are those agencies and the per-call, all the way from a low of Jasper runs two calls per year in the county to a high of 384 calls for service in the county. Now, keep in mind, these are volunteers that have jobs every day of the week, they have family events to go to, and they are running calls at all times of the day based on the need of the community out there. So that gets into some significant time requirements, not only training, but running calls, doing fundraises, all of those things. And you'll see that in a future slide is the amount of time that they're volunteering in their community and how that equates back to dollars and funds for those agencies. This is just a little bit of a history for the departments and once again, you can see most of them are on a level curve, but some of them are showing a trend line. And I don't think a three-year timeframe is probably the best to look at, but it's the information we had to look at. You'll see some highs and lows within all of those organizations, but once again, they do pretty much trend the year calls and everything. And we'll see a slight uptick in those, we think, as we're going forward. Unfortunately, your volunteers are being used for many different calls and you'll hear that a little bit later on, all from the fires that they, I mean, the fire used to be the big one that they'd go to, but it's now medical emergencies, their medical emergencies are changing, accidents, natural disasters, all of those things are things that your rural fire and rescue volunteers are responding to. This is just a quick overview of the response map. This map has been in, been there for many years. It doesn't change a whole lot because they use it for funding. Consequently, today is the day that your rural fire rescue and ambulance agencies will be going to their townships to request and receive funding and sign contracts. They are funded in many different areas, but today's the day where the annual township meetings have their meetings and they'll be going to those. But this is the response areas that they respond to and some of them are quite significant in area within the community around their areas, so. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike Harstead, he's the president of the Fire Chiefs Association. He'll give an update on some of their major activities through the, or through this past year, the things that you see on the slide, and then we'll transition in over into the EMS portion of the presentation, so.
Like Lynn said, I'm Mike Harstead, president of the Minnehaha County Fire Chiefs Association, starting my eighth year in that position. I just want to talk a little bit this morning about what our volunteer fire departments are doing out in the county and what's been going on in the last year for us. One of the major functions, focuses of the County Fire Chiefs Association is training. And we make something very unique here in our little corner of South Dakota, we do countywide training. So we group all of our agencies together to do that beginning firefighter training and then the enhanced training that goes on throughout their career as they develop more skills. We do that together because one of the things that we also have here is an automatic aid agreement. So if there's a structured fire in Renner, there's two more departments automatically called on that first page to go help. We all know that volunteer numbers are down and most of our communities in Minnehaha County are bedroom communities. So if you get a structured fire at 3:00 in the afternoon, the amount of volunteers that we have to pull from can be very, very small. So we rely on that automatic aid quite a bit to make sure that we can do all the things that we have to do safely. So we do a lot of training together, all the countywide, and then each of the departments kind of breaks apart and they train with their next closest departments to keep up that communication and everybody knows everybody when they get on a fire. Some things that we've done to hopefully be a little proactive with that volunteerism that's on a decline. Three years ago, the Minnehaha County Fire Chiefs Association received a SAFER grant from FEMA. SAFER is a staffing and recruitment as long, and as well as retention program that FEMA has funded. There is $0 required as a matching portion of that. So it's 100% funded by FEMA and all of that money goes towards recruitment and retention of volunteers right here in Minnehaha County. Hopefully, many of you have seen our commercials that run, we've been running recruitment commercials for the better part of four years. They have been very, very successful. When I talk about that training that we do every year, Minnehaha County accounts for a third of the certified firefighters that are trained every single year in the entire state. We average between 25 and 35 certified firefighters that are trained every single year. Most departments out there get lucky to get two or three or four, and we're doing 25 to 35 across our 14 agencies, which is a big deal. Part of that big deal is there's a very large gap in volunteerism right now. We have a lot of guys in that 50 to 70-year-old range and now we're going after the guys that are in that 20 to 30-year-old range. And we don't have a lot in between, so we're aging out people that just physically can't do all the things that are required to be a firefighter anymore, and we're bringing in a lot of new people. So we're constantly training. And like I said, I also work on a board with the state fire marshal's office, and if you look at the number of firefighters that are trained across the state, one-third of them are right here in Minnehaha County. So we had a big deal here back in June, we hosted the state fire school, we did most of the classes in and around the Ramkota Hotel. The big deal for that, the first night, we had Chad Greenway come in and give us a kind of a motivational speech. We had 850 people in for that event. It was great. Chad did a great job. For any of you Vikings fans, you know Chad's retiring today, so, but it was great. We haven't seen attendance like that at a state fire school since the late 80s. It was a big deal. We brought in a lot of extra family members and stuff so they could get some of the benefit of that. But before that, we also incorporated our yearly memorial service and our opening ceremonies so that the families could get a sense of what else we do when we go to fire school. Because we had a space big enough to do it, it really went off very, very well. We got a lot of help from Sioux Falls Fire Rescue with the memorial service and their color team, it was fantastic. Over that weekend, it's a three days' worth of training that we hosted, about 550 firemen from all over the state of South Dakota attended and logged a little over 2,000 hours of training time in three days. We had, you can see from some of the pictures, we had several live burn classes, which is just invaluable to firefighters. It's not very often anymore that we get the opportunity to train with live fire. There's so many rules and regulations to it. And then we kind of capped things off, you can see on the picture on the far left, we had water fights. This is kind of an old tradition within the fire service. It's a great opportunity for some camaraderie. We had about 32 teams, I believe, that took part and we had a vendor give about 7,500 bucks worth of prizes to the departments that won. And it's, like I said, it's just a great, great thing. So we had an extremely successful fire school. Some major incidents that went on this year, we had a structural collapse trench rescue call out in Brandon that provided some extremely unique challenges. A lot of work went into that. The other photo you see there is a large structure fire that, was that Humboldt or Hartford? Humboldt, in the rural area. Those types of things, like Lynn said earlier, we don't get nearly as many fires as we used to because of construction methods and smoke detectors and all those things, we don't get as many fires as we used to. But because of new building construction and the way things are done now, the fires that we get are huge, especially when you look at something out in the rural area, they end up being usually fully engulfed structure fires that take a ton of manpower and time to do.
Mike, I wonder if I could interrupt you for a moment. What about that hog barn north of Crooks? Are you going to bring that up?
Oh, my thunder, I was just going to talk about that.
Okay, good. Because I don't see a picture, it happened at night, what can I say?
It was really dark, it was hard to get a good picture. I want to talk about one call in specific, and thank you, Commissioner Barth. Christmas Day this year, at 8:00 at night, we got paged for a hog barn fire north of Crooks. And I, it was my job that night to be our incident commander. And I'm sure many of you were traveling for Christmas, so were a lot of our volunteers. And when you get a hog barn fire, we had two buildings in that confinement that were fully engulfed when we pulled in the driveway. We had well over 25,000 square feet of active fire. That's a really, really big fire. And so like with all our structure fires, it was, Crooks was paged, also Renner and Lyons. And we all immediately realized, if you remember the weather from Christmas Day, it was cold, we had 35 mile an hour sustained winds with gusts up to 65 miles an hour, and we had a really, really big fire with a confinement lot that's completely enclosed, everything is interconnected. So that fire is just blowing through every breezeway and everything else and there were in excess of 5,000 hogs in that facility at the time we got there. And we immediately called for a lot of help. We ended up with Crooks, Renner, Lyons, Baltic, Hartford, Colton, Dell's, emergency management, MedStar, all were out there at 9:00 at night on Christmas Day. And we did a head count, having eight agencies, basically we had half of the resources that our county had expendable that night at Crooks. And that amount of people, that totaled 49 people. That's, 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 that may seem like a lot, but when you're trying to fight a 2,500,000, or 25,000 square foot structure fire, that's not a lot. We had 14 tankers running a water shuttle from Crooks, which is about two miles away to our closest hydrant. We hauled 100,000 gallons of water that night. We supplied an aerial device from tankers. It's just not something that's done ever. But because of the training that we do together all the time and the work that we do and all of that coordination, man, things went really well. When we showed up, there were two buildings out of the seven on that campus that were fully engulfed. We stopped the fire to those two buildings. There was no damage done beyond that. All of the animals in both of those two buildings did die, but the adjoining buildings, there was no damage whatsoever. We were able to stop it in the breezeways and all of those buildings. And we were there from about 8:30 that night when it got paged, and I think we got back to the station at about 3:00 in the morning. But the other incredible thing, when you consider how big that structure was and how much wind there was, we never had to go back for a rekindle. By the time we were done, that fire was out and we left. And the best thing I can possibly report out of that is, nobody got hurt. On Christmas Day, we had this massive fire, we had all these resources out there and at the end of it, everybody got to go back home and enjoy the rest of their Christmas. So that was a big deal for us. Last thing I just want to talk about a little bit is some of the trends that we're seeing in not only our volunteers, but in our calls. Lynn was nice enough to put this picture of me and a horse in there, I appreciate that a lot. But this was a call that actually Lynn ran on with us because we were in the middle of helping Lyons on a grass fire and we got paged for a young lady that happened to be riding that horse. And the horse got scared, threw her off, she got banged up pretty good, but the horse went through a barbed wire fence too and got his legs all tore up. So we had to wait for MedStar to come out and so we took care of the young lady and bandaged her up and you can kind of see on one of the horse's legs, we bandaged him up too. So, but the increase in call volume, what Lynn showed with that one slide is just a three-year snapshot of data that we have. Well, for some of us, Leroy, Mike, we've been around a long time. I've been on Crooks Fire Department for 15 years. When I first joined Crooks, that year, we ran 40 calls. Last year, we ran 124. That's three times the number in 15 years. And we're doing it with the same amount of people. Back then, when I joined, we had 24 volunteers. Today, we have 24 volunteers. Those resources are being extended further and further than they ever have. And when you talk about the types of calls that we handle now, the variety, whether it's a, you know, a high-speed collision out on the interstate where we've got extrication required, or the trench rescue that you saw in Brandon, or ginormous structure fires, we have to train for all we have to train for all of those things. That's one of the big differences in the fire service that you see today versus 20 years ago. We specifically train on those items. We have better tools, we have better equipment than we've ever had, but all of those things take an enormous amount of time to be proficient with them. One of the things I tell my guys all the time is, you don't want to show up on a call and not know how to run the piece of equipment that's required to do what we gotta do. So we, we train really, really hard on that. And one of the things that we always struggle with, every department struggles with, the cost for that equipment. You can take, you can go to Handyman and buy an axe, but if you, if you stamp it "fire service rated," it just went up by 3% or three times or something like that. It's always, the, the fire equipment, the stuff that we're basically required to carry that we, that we have to purchase to make, make our, make our ratings and stuff go, it, it just continues to rise. So the last thing I want to mention, something that all of our departments are very, very proud of, for any of you that are aware of the ISO rating process, the city of Sioux Falls here, there, a couple of years ago, they just got down to a 1, which is the best rating that you can get for fire service. It used to be that we would see the ISO man once every 10 or 15 years. ISO has changed their process a little bit so they come around more often. So most of the communities around our county have been rerated in the last two to three years. And if, for you that aren't familiar, ISO is, gives your community a fire rating, and then your homeowner's insurance is based off of that fire rating. And the lower the number, the better. And it used to be, if you looked around the, the county, most of our communities were probably eights or sevens and maybe a six out of a couple of them. Well, one of the things that's happened here in the last couple of years, ISO has been coming around and, and doing those ratings on a more consistent basis and actually working with us to help understand the equipment required and stuff to lower those scores. Just in Crooks alone, we went from a six to a five last year, and I know many of our communities have been able to lower their ISO score in the last three to four years because of that more, more of a spirit of cooperation, but also just them wanting to be around more. So all of our tax base should be seeing a reduction in their homeowner's insurance because of that work. So that's really all I wanted to share with you this morning. I appreciate the time, and I'll pass it back to Lynn.
Does anyone have any questions for Mike or?
We'll, we'll get back to that at the end too. There's a, a time for that. So just finishing up the rural fire part here, so one of the things I ask the fire chiefs to do, and that some of them do for their regular budgetary needs with the townships in the city, is get me a number of what you think you guys put in for volunteer hours. So the numbers you see are up on the spreadsheet are those numbers. Some of the departments put in training, some of them put in, you know, planning, their meetings, their statewide training. There's a whole variety of those things that they put in there that they use for the budgetary planning. This year, because it was the first time we did this report, I just asked them to come up with the numbers that they do. In the future, when we do it, we'll standardize that a little more. But even when they just put their numbers together, you can see that as a collective group, between the agencies that are out there and the volunteers in my office, they put in over 47,000 hours of volunteer, excuse me, of volunteer time to their community. So that's a huge, you know, amount of what you're thinking, and those hours are only the hours that they're actually doing something. Those aren't the hours that they're ready to do something, which is 365 days a year. So I think that's a, that's a pretty telling number there, and I think if we standardize that number, or that formula, you would only see that that number probably goes up to a much more significant number. So in pulling off a volunteer rate on the internet, that comes over, or comes up to at least a million dollars' worth of service that the rural fire and rescue provides for their communities in dollar figures. So moving along, once again, the rural areas are served by the following ambulance companies. Garrettson's a volunteer, Dell Rapids, Jasper, Humboldt, MedStar, and then Paramedics Plus has now started serving the county in 2016, and their representatives are here today also. 2016 calls for service, once again, these numbers were provided by Metro Communications. You'll see the high over in the MedStar area because of their population center, and then the low, the low is the Jasper area, four calls for service last year. You'll see that the rural metro Paramedics Plus, there's been some fluctuation in there because of the change of providers in the last year. I thought it was important to add them because next year, with our new ambulances, or currently the new ambulance response map that we'll have, you should see that Paramedics Plus number come up most likely, and then the MedStar number will probably dip slightly because of some of the change in the response areas. This is a three-year call for service once again, and you'll see some of those things that I talked about in the rural metro Paramedics Plus category, and then how those level of calls correspond over into the MedStar area. The rest of the services are there, and once again, they're running significant calls, over, over 400 calls for service in the Jasper area, and then the corresponding amount, or excuse me, in the Dell Rapids area, and then the corresponding amounts for Garrettson and the Humboldt. Okay, we talked a little bit about this, but this is the rural EMS response areas. Once again, there was some changes in November at the commission, and those changes are reflected in this map, so you'll see some differences in calls in the 2017. But I think as we go in the future, you'll see that the trend line will go up about 3% a year once everything stabilizes in the next couple of years. So Tim, even from the Rural Ambulance Association will come up and talk about some of their activities here, so I'll turn it over to Tim. Go ahead.
Morning Commissioners, Tim, even with Humboldt Fire and Ambulance, a couple of things that we want to talk about that's going on with EMS in the county. As the map showed here a little bit ago, that was one thing that the ambulance providers out in the county got together and with the request of the commission that they wanted to see maybe a change in the coverage areas. We sat down and spent, oh, several, several nights, I guess, we spent time getting together and getting back to you a, a coverage map that was agreeable to all the services in the county, and I believe that turned out quite well. One of the other things you see is our EMS quality review, and I believe Dr. Luther is going to be up later talking about that, and making sure that you have a efficient and quality EMS system within the county. We do have a body armor grant that was obtained through the help of Lynn DeYoung. The calls are changing out there. When, like I say, when I started, I didn't have any gray hair, and now I do, and I would have never guessed that we'd be talking body armor for EMS. Things are, at times, getting a little scary out there, that is for sure. We also produce, or did our Fitch EMS study that the county requested. The services sat down, and I know Humboldt, we spent at least two hours with those folks when they were in town, and I believe Lynn said that that report should be coming out in the next couple of months, so that'll be interesting to see what they have to say as far as EMS trends in Minnehaha County. Like I say, the, the trends, I guess you see, I'd like to think that what the graph showed that we're low on call volume, I, I wish it was trending that way, but I guess as Lynn alluded to, we're, we're staying pretty busy. But the, the things we're starting to see out there is different. It, it isn't just difficulty breathing or something along those lines anymore now when it gets toned out. A lot of times, the sheriff's office is getting involved because things are different, thus the, the body armor. Like I say, the, the thing we have going right now is in the county, I believe, you know, that is set up is more of an EMS system that the, the rural ambulances provide for the county. So it's not necessarily all about just call volume, you know, per service, but it is set up as a system to help if there is, or if the need arises for anyone within the county. EMS also took place in the Safer Grant as well. Humboldt, we were picked as one of the services to have them come out and shoot one of the commercials for, I guess, kind of with the fire, but more with the ambulance side of it, to let people know that, in the commercials, that we are looking for volunteers as well on the EMS side of things, not just fire. And the, again, as everyone has talked, the lack of volunteers is, you, you struggle to find it, and hopefully, you know, like I said, getting the, the EMS as part of the Safer Grant will, will attract some people to maybe take a look at it. Training does get expensive to train an EMT. You're looking at close to probably $1,000 to get somebody put through the EMT class. But with that, thanks to the, the county, there is a fund set up where some of that can be recuperated through some training funds that the county has provided. Other than that, I guess, like I said, when we're out looking for volunteers, I don't think we're going to lead with that we have body armor on board, and we'll maybe let them know that a little bit later. So other than that, like I said, I think what we got going for us right now is working well, and I would thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, Tim.
So just finishing up here, as you can see, each one of the ambulances, once again, were asked to provide the volunteer services, so many of them provide, during the daytime, they have daytime staffing that covers them. And then there's the other hours. So these other hours that you see here are the strictly volunteer hours. So once again, probably the biggest difference in hours you see between the rural ambulance and rural volunteers is, in Humboldt, they actually schedule volunteers on nights and weekends when their paid services in there. So you'll see, that's why they have a increased number. So same thing in Garrettson and, and Dell Rapids. So there's never a time where the ambulance is uncovered, so to speak. So that's why it adds up significantly, that there's always someone there to answer the pager. That's why you see it's that 23,535 number. And then when you add the two of them together, along with search and rescue in my agency, you come up with a total of 1,588,286 hour, or dollars' worth of basically compensated time that these guys are adding into the system. If they weren't there, this is the amount that you could expect to at least start funding a different type of system. And they're not advocating for you changing the system, but this is a good reminder to the taxpayer of the dollars they're adding in by volunteering. You add in the, or so you take a look at the total number of hours, you come up with that approximately 71,000. And, you know, one of the things, like I said, is I was looking for them to bring the hours forward, what they include in their hours. Many of those chiefs, especially, and you have them here from Baltic, Brandon, Renner, all the agencies that are here, they're all here because this is important to them. This is important to what they do for the community. But one of the numbers that stuck out was, one of the chiefs included, he does, did last year, he counted 300-plus hours just in paperwork. And that, you know, trust me, no one gets on a fire department to do the paperwork. They all get on the fire department to help their family, friends, and neighbors. So those are the other things that they're being asked to do along with those calls that go out there. And I think if, like I said, if the average person knew that when you become chief and captain or all those other things, it's not just about helping your neighbors, it's about doing paperwork to make sure your organization is successful and training is completed and your ISO rating is done. So all of those things go in to help the community of Minnehaha County. So I would open it up to, if the commission has any specific questions, like I said, there's all kinds of chiefs here. You can each, ask each one of them, the ambulance directors, you can certainly ask them any questions. But I thought this was a good opportunity to provide a year-end review, so to speak, for the commission, and we'll look to do that in the future based on the needs of the commission for the next several years, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Barth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got to say that in my 11 years of being on the county commission, that getting to know the ambulance and fire folks has been one of the best things that I've enjoyed the most. And so I look forward to seeing you guys for at least another couple of years here. And I would also, I guess, mention perhaps that Chief Leroy Koopman here represents our state on a national level, and he, I always enjoy going to Colton and oyster stew and stuff. But Chief, why don't you stand up for just a sec? Anyway, I think a little recognition every now and then should come from all of us.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Over here.
Just comment. I'm glad the Argus leader is here today because this makes an excellent story, and, and the numbers that you've provided, the county savings and tax dollars that would be added to your tax bill, and probably a whole lot more if we had to be funding the fire department and the ambulance at what it costs to really run the service, so.
Tim and Mike, your leadership in providing those services is invaluable, obviously. It takes extra time and effort to make that happen, and to Mr. Koopman, all of those hours are an investment in what we enjoy as a quality of life, so thank you for your support. Other comments? Lynn, do you have some?
Nope. I was just gonna say, thank you. The one thing on the end of the part, we didn't touch it, is there's two year imports, reports specifically within your data pack from, one from Colton and the other one from Dell Rapids, so.
Perfect timing. Perfect timing.
Hopefully, it's just an alarm.
Have your hat and hit the road.
But, trust me, these guys are all ready for service too, and they're ready for service 24 hours a day, 24 hours a year, whether it's on the ambulance side or the fire side, they're gonna be there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much Commissioners. As, as always, we appreciate your continued support, and we look forward to seeing you guys when you can come out to, all of us do fundraisers and everything else all year, and we certainly appreciate when you guys can hop in and see us, so thank you.
Thank you. Item 12 is a briefing by the ambulance quality assurance director from October through December of the county ambulance oversight report. Dr. Luther.
Good morning Commissioners. Dr. Jeff Luther, your quality assurance director. I wanted to, to, I guess, a brief commentary before I jump into the report. Very impressed with the turnout today. I cut my teeth on EMS. I was a medic in the Marine Corps, got out, worked for Sioux Falls Ambulance as a EMT. I eventually was a firefighter for about five years before I went back to medical school. And then I got out, I wanted to be an ER doctor, and then I got pulled into EMS through that, but I always got paid for it. And I always had respect for the volunteers, and worked with the volunteers in various capacities through the years, whether it be training or just seeing them in their emergency room. But there's always been a constant, and that's familiar faces. And as Tim even had put it, the only difference now is a lot of wrinkles and gray hair, but it's, it's a tough, tough world being in EMS, let alone be a volunteer. And now, to recruit a volunteer and put him through the amount of training that they have to do, and also pass the national registry, and then you can come on our service and volunteer, and oh, by the way, now you gotta wear a bulletproof vest. So hats off to those folks, very impressive. This is for the last quarter, and to recap the process, I presented in front of Commissioner Karski on the other side of the city, but this is just a little different process. I receive a data file from Metro Dispatch monthly, which is all call volumes, and it's a big, a big file to sift through, but it gives me the information that I need to, in the end, pull out and review the key performance indicators that I present. Those key performance indicators at the basic life support level are things like oxygen therapy, assisting with medications, the medical types of calls that you see, chest pains, trauma. The things that I look at on the run reports are things like primary and secondary survey, immobilization, spinal immobilization, hemorrhage control, those sorts of things. Specifically, what I review here also includes ordinance requirements, and those are some of the response intervals that I look at. According to our system, they have, they being the ambulance services, have 60 seconds to acknowledge they have a call, and then they have to be en route within 10 minutes. And I'll, I'll go through that in the report. Again, receiving the information is much more fluid now. I get those at the county administration office. Lynn DeYoung helps me with that. Carolyn and Robert have as well. So what I did for the last quarter is I received information from Metro. Again, there were 352 rural ambulance calls within the county during that timeframe. I received about, well, it was actually 119 charts that I reviewed. And again, the process- And again, the process involves, I pull the chart out, and each service has a little bit different chart, but it's all contains the same basic information. So I put a sticker on there that's got a checklist of the performance indicators I look for. And so I will check those as I go through. If I can't see it initially on the chart, I set that off to the side and I'll review it again in more detail, meaning I'll look at the narrative that is usually in the report. So I did not find any issues. There were eight I set aside and reviewed those, and those are usually documentation sorts of things. They may not have listed the blood sugar on the report, but it was in the narrative. Or they may not have gotten me a blood pressure reading, or I didn't see the blood pressure reading, but it was in the narrative. So that review did not include any items that impacted patient care. Again, as a backup, we still have the destinations. And I reach out to them periodically to see if there's been any issues with any of our ambulance services. I talk with the ED directors, nurse directors. Monthly, I meet with REMZA, and there's representatives from all three hospitals and also physicians that I reach out to. And three of those happen to be medical directors for the ambulance services in the county. Also, part of the ordinance requirement is that we review pediatric cases. And for the last 10 years or longer, I don't know, I've sat on the regional infant and children mortality committee. It's not a very happy committee, but it initially started out as just reviewing all pediatric deaths, that being under the age of 18 in Minnehaw County. And we're up to 18 counties now. And we just had our quarterly meeting, so we reviewed all pediatric deaths. And that includes a forensic review with the forensic pathologists, law enforcement is there, and then also EMS. And we'll review those. So I think also through the report, I'll get into some of these other things that I think have enhanced the care provision in the county. We'll talk about some of the changes. We do, or the last ambulance association meeting, we did review a collectively trench collapse out in Brandon. The idea was to just get input and to look at it and review it. It wasn't a critical review, it was just more of an informational thing and looking for other information that we might be able to improve that scenario if it were ever to happen again. Again, I think based on all that I have in the information, I think the care and the quality out there is very good. At least at that BLS level. Again, I do review ALS. Again, the differentiation between those two is procedures and interventions, airway, those sorts of things. The things that I look at on the ALS level is success rates of IVs and success rates of intubation. I really don't have a good way of doing follow-up to see if it's all medications, the dosage, the rate or routes of informations were there. I don't know how to do that at the BLS review. That takes much more time. But again, I think if there was a major medication error, I would pick that up at the destination. Now, there have been some calls that have fallen out, and I've gotten the concerned parties together, and those have all been worked through, resolved. So I've seen no issue with the IV and/or the intubations. We are, as part of the evolution of prehospital care, if you will, we're gonna look at adding a different type of airway, which is approved at the BLS level. It's what we call a superglottic airway. It's basically the same airway that you have when you're under general anesthesia and having elective surgery, like a NISCOLD. They're very easy to put in. There's a chance to improve outcomes and save lives with this. It's more effective than the bag valve mask or the other airway we use in the county, which is the King Air or even combi tubes. This is much more effective. It may even obviate the need to do an endotracheal intubation. I don't want, and we're working with the county sheriff's EMT program right now. Working with Al, I've sent them the protocols and the guidelines I'd like to see. And we'd like to promulgate that out into the ambulance services, but I don't want to do that until I meet with them first, the users, to make sure it's okay, because there is some expense and some change in equipment. If it's all okay with them and it looks like we might be able to do this universally across the board, I'll approach the rest of the medical directors. But I have gotten buy-in from the medical directors from Humboldt, MedStar. Del Rapids is already doing it. So I think that's a good thing that we'll be able to do in terms of enhancing our care. Things have changed, you know, how we provide care. You know, years ago, it was almost criminal not to use oxygen in certain situations. Well, through best practices, we've now known that oxygen actually can be detrimental in certain situations. If you have a normal oxygen saturation that they measure in certain conditions and we put high-flow oxygen in, it's actually detrimental and can cause some harm. So we'll look at changing that. Now, back with the, to the specific sorts of things here, these are some numbers from the Minnehaw County Sheriff's Office, the EMTs in this last quarter. Again, of the 352 ambulance calls, the deputies responded to 77% of the priority calls. Also, what is important, I think now we are completely in the priority one dispatching. So priority one is the emergent. Priority twos and priority threes are less emergent types of calls. But you can see from this slide here that of those calls, there were 77% again to the priority one calls, 43% to priority two, and 31% for priority three. Those are non-emergencies. So overall, 40% of all EMS calls in the fourth quarter, we've had an EMT deputy. Their intervention on scene can be anything from just going ahead and starting CPR to assisting somebody with medications, to if it's a known opioid overdose, they can initial, or initiate Narcan. So they could do a lot of things initially in that 60 to 90 seconds, which is very important in terms of initiating care. Through the geographic area, 53% of Del Rapids ambulance calls, they're on 44% of Garrettson's, 66% of Humboldt, and 21% of MedStar's calls in that fourth quarter. I had a list, broke that down for you, that the types of calls that they respond to. It's a myriad, from injury accidents to breathing problems. So they're out there. And I think it's a, it's a good adjunct to the ambulance service that we have out there. And it continues to be. And I think that we can also continue to enhance what they do to assist the ambulances. This is some of the indicators that I reviewed for each of the services. Paramedics Plus on the end, just really getting started in their primary service area. The random sample review, as per the ordinance, they calls for a 25% review of random calls. And so they submit them, it could be any type of call involved in that, from a minor medical call to a well-being call to anything outside the required call review per the ordinance. List the number of deaths across the top there. Those could be deaths in a home, that could be from a nursing home or somebody that was called that died in the field. Pediatric calls, again. And then the life-threatening calls are all listed there for each service through that quarter. Getting down to some of the, you'll see priority one, that's where they respond emergently. Priority one calls are important to review because it's a public safety sort of thing. Years ago, everybody would respond with lights and sirens, but now with our priority dispatching system, we've got better ways of triaging, if you will, that response out to the call. And then I think what we look at per the ordinance is that the dispatch en route, all of the services were over 90%, meaning that they're en route within 10 minutes. I don't look at scene times, meaning how long they are with the patient. In that, in that setting, I think it's a little different than it is in the city. But anyways, I didn't see anything as I review the reports in their current format. So again, no issues there. Last slide, again, is kind of a percentage breakdown of each call. So Del Rapids in October, almost 13% of their calls was of cardiac nature. 25% were these other medical calls. Again, that could be a sick person, belly pain, fainting, you name it. Others, I have a percentage of others that could be called out for a lyftocist or a call to a nursing home for transport, what have you. I have the number of P1 calls for each service in that particular quarter. And again, paramedics plus, we're just getting some of their data together now. And so we'll have more information. But getting back to paramedics plus, as part of the city, I'm reviewing hundreds of those calls a week anyway. So I think that that review and what I find is applicable for right now into the county until I get more information. But we'll specifically break that down once I get more calls. After that, I think, I guess that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Luther. Does anyone have any questions for him? Commissioner Barth?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Doctor, I really appreciate your report today, and I think our new process is really working the way we would hope. And I wanted to ask, though, about, you know, the Narcan stuff. None of our stats show overdose as a, as an item. How often is it happening? And is that a category we should start to list?
Absolutely, very good question. I am able, at least at the, from the sheriff's standpoint, the deputies look at that. I think it's very important with this, it's an epidemic, and I will, good point, add that as a performance indicator. We're seeing so many overdoses now and overdoses resulting in death. And in fact, what I've seen in the city in the past two months, there was four of them. Four overdoses resulting in death. And the Narcan reverses that if we can get to them quick enough. Narcan won't hurt anyone. It'll only help particularly if they got an opioid on board. So it's a very good point, and we could add that easily as a performance indicator.
Other questions? Commissioner Karski?
In the great scheme of things, I don't think it's real important to care, but you made a comment about, on the KPIs, and it seems that you don't have a standardized chart, that you get a report back from all the different entities. And each serf, each service has a different report that they use. Wouldn't it be beneficial if we're all kind of reporting on the same thing and in the same manner? And how difficult would that be?
Well, you know, there are some standardized forms, and I think that, you know, going forward, if with the ambulance associations, we can make roadway that way to get a standardized format so it'll be easier, at least for me, anyway. They all do contain the same information. It's just that I gotta kind of bounce around for it. If I look for a glass cow coma scale, you know, which is the level of responsiveness that a patient, they'll list that, but I have to find it maybe on one page. And again, on some of those that fall out, that I can't find the documentation for a performance indicator, I'll find that KPI in the narrative. The person will have said, well, you know, I applied oxygen for a saturation of 87%, even though I may not have found it on the checklist portion.
So how hard would it be to implement a standardized form?
I don't think it would be difficult at all. I think we just get everybody together, agree upon the, a one standard format. And again, since they are the same information, just to categorize it, where it's much easier to look through and, or even electronically would be, would be great to be able to do that. But there's also, these charts that I get and pick up at the administration office, you know, they're all sealed and because they have patient information, and of course, everybody's, you know, we want to make sure that we're HIPAA compliant, wherever we are, when we're transporting this information. I take it back to my office and I have a gal that scans them in. And then, so I can get those out of my hands and shred them as soon as I can. But I have it all on electronic, so I can sit at the computer and review them. But I don't think it would be difficult at all.
Other questions for Dr. Luther? Again, thank you for being here, and we appreciate your support. Item 13 is to authorize the chair to sign professional services agreement with JSA engineers and land surveys for construction administrative services in the amount of $80,355 for asphalt surfacing on 5.6 miles of county highway 149. DJ?
Morning, commissioners. DJ Boothby, highway superintendent. I thought all these people were here to listen about road projects.
It affects them, some of them.
Right. Okay, this one is for JSA engineers for construction administration services for the asphalt surfacing on the road reconstruction project just north of Hartford. As you guys are well aware, last year, we completed the first phase of of road reconstruction and grading on this five-mile section of roadway. And we had a construction bid just recently, which blocktop paving was a little bitter. And this agreement is for JSA to conduct the construction administration portion or the construction oversight of the contractor out in the field. The agreement amount is $80,355. It's an hourly agreement, not to exceed that dollar amount. And if you have any questions about the way that the agreement is worded or anything, I can answer that now. Otherwise, we're looking for your approval to sign off on the agreements.
Any questions for DJ?
Make a motion to authorize the chair to sign that contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the services agreement with JSA engineers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item 14 is to authorize the chair to sign a professional services agreement with Short Elliot Hendrickson for construction administration services in the amount of $58,959 to replace Renner Bridge structure along highway 130.
Commissioner, it's very similar to this last agreement. This one is for construction administration. However, this one is for a bridge replacement project in Renner. And we had the bid opening last month, and Pram Construction out of Slate, Minnesota is gonna be constructing this project. SEH is the designer of this, of these plans and who we want to do the construction administration. Their agreement, $58,959. Again, that's also an hourly agreement. It will be billed out on hours with not to exceed that dollar amount. So if you have any questions, I can answer them on this one.
Any questions?
Move to approve as requested.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the services agreement with Short Elliot Hendrickson for construction administration services for the replacement of the Renner Bridge structure. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item 15 is to authorize the chair to sign a professional service agreement with JSA engineers and land surveys for preliminary engineering and final design in the amount of $345,251.72 for 5.3-mile reconstruction of county highway 149.
Commissioners, this is the second segment of the 149 reconstruction project. The first one being that one just north of Hartford that we just discussed. And we are wanting to work again with JSA engineers as the designer for this corridor. And this year, or this project is probably going to be a three-year construction or three-year project where we complete the design in 2017, and the first phase of construction in 2018, and the second phase of construction in 2019. We are still working with a lot of the coordination of construction projects. We've been thrown kind of a for loop because of the DOT did change a construction year on a project on I-29 and the Del Rapids exit. And so that kind of messes with some of our detour routes. And so we're not really sure if the 18 and 19 construction years are gonna hold for this project. But that's what we're working towards. And if nothing else, we'll have these plans shelved for a year or two before we move to construction. So with that, this is the full design, both the preliminary engineering and the final design. And so we expect that we would receive full design plan, or full construction plans at the end of this agreement.
Questions for DJ?
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion and a second to approve the professional services agreement with JSA for the preliminary engineering and final design services for the 5.3-mile reconstruction of highway 149. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you. Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item sixteen is a briefing on a Minnehaha Public Defender and Southeastern Behavioral Health Agreement and the Alternative Sentence Work Program, Worker Program.
Thank you. Good morning.
Tracy?
Tracy Smith, Minnehaha County Public Defender's Office. Six months ago, the commission authorized our office and Southeastern Behavioral Health to enter into an agreement to provide services to our clientele for mental health, alcohol and substance abuse, and early intervention programs for the aim to reduce recidivism and reduce incarceration costs by maximizing community case-based services for those of our clients who are seeking services to address substance abuse treatment, mental health services in lieu of incarceration. With me today are Mike Miller, Chief Deputy, and our Alternative Sentencing Worker Debbie Feini, who have more information to present to the commission. Also, Chris Graham with Southeastern Behavioral Health is here for questions.
Mike, Debbie?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Debbie Feini. I'm the new Alternative Sentencing Worker for Southeastern Directions for Life. My office is located at the Public Defender's Office. I'm excited to be a part of this new program, as it affects many, many people in different ways. I'd like to take just a few minutes, though, to explain how we developed this program. And it was through the collaboration with Southeastern Directions for Life and the Public Defender's Office. We knew what we wanted to do, and that was to help the people who had a mental illness, substance abuse, help them get connected with resources versus just sitting time in jail. And then help with the, the cost of the incarceration. So I did some research and came across the state of Kentucky. And Kentucky has a program that's called the Alternative Sentencing Worker Program. It started in two thousand and six. So in November, the Southeastern Directions for Life sent me to Kentucky, and I trained with them for about a week down there. They currently have forty-five Alternative Sentencing Workers in their, across the state. And in a little while, we'll show you some of their numbers. So throughout, through this partnership that we were able to develop and bring this program to Minnehaha County. So I want to just kind of give you an overview of what the Alternative Sentencing Worker actually does. We divert persons to services and treatments so that they can successfully trans, transition into the communities to become a productive citizen. Diverting a person with a mental illness and a substance abuse into these street, community-based treatments will save obviously on incarceration costs. And Mike will here in a little bit, kind of go over those savings that we have already seen as far as savings for the incarceration costs. Engaging the individuals to participate in their treatment plan, we've, has shown a decrease in new offenses, which decreases the recidivism rate. Overall, it increases the client's self, the client's economic self-sufficiency. They're starting to pay taxes, they're getting jobs, they're paying on child support, restitution, or any court costs. So the Alternative Sentencing Worker looks at the client as a whole. We take a lot of things into consideration. We look at their developmental factors as far as environment, family structure. Was there any trauma that was in their family or to them? So we look at everything as a whole, not just what they're being charged for. So just to give you an idea of what I do is I meet with the clients, I get a referral from the lawyers, where they feel that I could be of some help. So I get the referral, and then I meet with those clients. I do an assessment. And on those assessments, we determine what's their primary target, what's their need. Is it a mental health issue, a substance abuse concern? If so, I connect them with a therapist at Southeastern Directions for Life, who performs an evaluation. I usually get those evaluations back in about a week. And I'm then able to take all that information that they have put together, plus all the assessment information that I've done, and I develop a plan. I then give this plan to the attorneys. They can present it to the courts. And this plan doesn't only give out the recommendations, but it gives a better picture of a profile of the client itself, kind of where they came from, what led them to where they're at today. And then it also gets them connected with additional resources, not just for treatment, but maybe we just help them get some clothing, or we hooked them up with Department of Social Services for food stamps. It's a wide variety of services that we do help them with. And then we will follow them. The Alternative Sentencing Worker is very important for follow-up. So we follow them at three months, six months, and then at a year. And what we do is we try to find out if they're following through with their recommendations. Maybe they've kind of gotten off track. We help them get back on track. Follow-through is very important to make sure that they are successful in everything that they, they're doing. A person can get pretty overwhelmed with making changes in their life. All this information is then collected. We have, Southeastern Directions for Life has put together a program that we collect all this information, and at the end of the year, we'll be able to see how many of these individuals started out being homeless, how many have we housed, how many didn't have a job when they were arrested, and how many have a job now. So we'll be able to give a better idea of all of those variables. Just like we had talked about, this program is designed to help people with mental illness, substance abuse, and getting them back on the right track, but in also saving incarceration costs. So, and since I've started, the end of October, we've had over forty referrals to this program. And Mike's going to kind of go over some of the figures of our cost savings.
So far, from those forty referrals, there have been three individual clients that have been sentenced.
You probably need to speak into the mic, because this is being broadcast.
Yep. There have been three individual clients that have been sentenced. The others are still pending. They're still working with Debbie to create their sentencing plan. But of the three that were sentenced, the first client had been looking at seven years because of the services and things that he did and was provided with and that were presented to the judge. He only served eighty-four days. So total incarceration savings for him was a hundred and forty-six thousand roughly dollars. The second client was looking at serving three years, and only served five months. So incarceration savings for that client was roughly forty-nine thousand dollars. The third client was a misdemeanor client and was looking at serving forty-five days in jail, but because of the services that he had participated in, didn't do any jail time. And that was an incarceration savings of a little over four thousand dollars.
Commissioner Bender?
Mike, could you just, I'm, I'm a little curious about some of the language you use and how you're measuring this. So when you say looking at seven years in prison, does that mean he was sentenced, and then the judge commuted the sentence, or?
No, that means the agreement. So his agreement or his cap of what he was looking at facing when he went into sentencing.
That he was, okay.
Yes. So not necessarily the maximum penalty on the charge, but his maximum of what he could have gotten at sentencing.
Okay. So we don't know necessarily that the judge changed their mind because of the recommendations that were made here, or? I'm not trying to be critical. I'm just trying to understand better how.
At, at this point, I'm not sure how to answer that. We're collecting the data. They're designing a program to measure some of that stuff. But the plans and the information were presented to the judge at sentencing, and then they considered that with a whole host of other things. So I don't know.
So it's not necessarily a direct line. It's, it's a possibility?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then just one last question, if I may. So when you talk about the total incarceration savings, I'm curious whether that's savings that the state recognized because they would have been serving prison time, or whether it's county time that they would have been in jail here? Do you have an idea?
That's a good question. If you look at client one, it's both county and state. He could have served a hundred and eighty days in the county jail, since the judge didn't impose prison time. But he only served eighty-four. So that's a savings to the county of jail time of eighty-eight hundred dollars. The seven years in the penitentiary is a savings to the state. That was about a hundred and thirty-seven. So in a lot of these cases, it's going to be a mix. Client number three was only looking at county jail time, and so that's a savings just to the county.
Thank you.
Did you want to build a state?
I, I think it might be a part of a discussion that we could have at some point.
And then, I think we figured it out. For the three clients, they were looking at serving a total between county and prison time of thirty-six hundred days, and they ended up serving a total of two hundred and thirty-five days.
So these are just some of the Kentucky fund, did you have a question?
You have to move the microphone a week in here, sorry.
So these are some of the state of Kentucky findings. When they, when they got done, for every one dollar they spent on the ASW program, there was a five dollar and sixty cents return on the investment. In one of their pilot years, they saved, the client served fifteen hundred days, where they could have looked at eleven hundred days in the incarceration. And then eighty-six point one percent of their clients had a substance abuse as their main focus of needing some intervention. And then thirty-four percent of it was for mental health.
Commissioner Bender?
Apparently, I'm the curious one here today. So back to my funding question. I'm curious how they fund this program in Kentucky. Is it funded with county dollars, with state dollars?
It's a state.
It's state dollars, okay.
Miss, Commissioner Bender, that Dean and I already had this presentation.
Okay.
So it's okay.
And just the reason that we show these is, these are the savings and the kind of things that Kentucky has seen. So these are things that hopefully we can see by doing this. It is a state program there, and they have an organization that oversees all of them. And throughout the state, there are close to fifty, I think, Alternative Sentencing Workers.
Other questions? Or, I do think Commissioner Bender's brought up a good point, is if this is going to take some other steps to hopefully go to a legislative conversation, that having a broken-out dollar amount for the county versus the state would be extremely important for their review. Other questions? Thank you for your services. Looks like the responses at this point have been very positive, so.
They have been.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome to the normal South Dakota winter. Item seventeen. Chuck, do you want to do the proclamation?
Yeah, I can do that.
Been sitting there for two hours. Why?
It's a good time. I thought everybody came to watch me, but I was wrong.
Scared them all off.
Stung on bad jokes. Chuck Martin, LSU Extension, Minnehaha County Four-H Program Extension. Proclamation I'm presenting here today is for the Water Festival that occurs for the last twenty-four years in the county here. The proclamation here is, whereas the Big Sioux Aquifer underlies approximately one thousand square miles, and together with the Big Sioux River provides water to communities in southeastern South Dakota, whereas providing twenty-five hundred and fifty fourth-grade children from one hundred and seventeen classes in forty-nine southeastern school districts, with information about the protection and preservation of water, a most valuable resource, will help children make educated, educated decisions concerning water in the future. Whereas this education is accomplished with the help of a hundred-plus staff, volunteers from federal, state, county, and city governments, and from private businesses. And this is a twenty-fourth annual event. So we're asking for you guys to recognize this twenty-fourth annual event with our, with the proclamation for the Water Festival days.
Thank you. Any questions for Chuck?
I attended this, oh, gosh, probably twenty years ago, with kids as a sponsor, as a parent sponsor that went, and it was a big deal then. And it's hard to believe it's twenty-four years now. So I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the proclamation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I have a question for you. I just happened to be in a conversation yesterday about the Levitt Project with the Stockyards and all those additions and all the programs they're going to offer. Is that going to be a possible partnership with the Four-H Program?
Yeah, we're working on talking to, with that group, and it's, we're seeing where they want to go first. So before we commit and overcommit our resources.
Sure. Oh, great. You guys are doing an excellent job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eighteen is to consider a motion to approve the proposed consulting agreement for Barry Dunn for Enterprise Resource Planning Financial Solution.
Good morning, Commissioners. Monty Wadambak with Minnehaha County IT Department. As, as you may know, last week, I came to the commission that was present with an agreement to Tyler Technologies for a software solution that is composed of financial tax and also HR payroll software. That agreement was, was approved and assigned. So this agreement is with Barry Dunn Technologies, who would act as an independent consultant on behalf of Minnehaha County to guide us through that process. And a little bit of background information about our engagements with Barry Dunn. We started working with them a little over a year ago. Our first engagement with them was a, a needs assessment report or engagement with them. And they brought their team of consultants in and interviewed various departments and key staff from our, our departments here to get an idea of our current solutions and processes, and to write that report of, you know, really what, what the county needs for financial tax and HR payroll software. So based on that, that needs assessment report, they essentially told us that we're in need of evolving our software to more modern, a more modern solution. The next engagement with Barry Dunn was to help us write an RFP to select a, a new solution. So that process has been going on for quite some time and, and wrapped up here recently when we selected Tyler Technologies. So this third agreement, then, this, this new agreement would, like I said, be to have Barry Dunn guide us through implementing this solution. Really kind of acting as a, an owner's rep, if you will, to guide us through that process and act on our behalf to do the project management of that solution. So with that being said, I'm here for any questions you may have.
So anyone have any questions for Monty? Commissioner?
Monty, so this is in our budget for this purpose, right?
Yes, correct. I intended to mention that. This was budgeted as part of that, that overall solution. So that is in the budget. We may have to carry some of that, those budget funds over, because this project is a, almost a two-year project.
Mr. Reiberger?
There wasn't a contract connected with this, so are we bringing back the contract on later date?
There was supposed to be a.
At least.
If I may.
Okay.
I thought there was.
Kirsten has a comment.
If I may, my understanding was that we were accepting a certain package proposal, if you will, from what they presented. I have not seen a contract, but you could act today to accept those proposal components, and then we can finalize the contract, basically authorizing it to go forward today, if you don't want to bring it back.
No, no, there's necessarily a contract. It's basically a proposal. And so in the proposal, that should have been included.
That was.
There was two different options. So it's option two, which is the full project management option. So.
That was there. I just wasn't sure.
I'm kind of surprised that that doesn't have some sort of signature page, so I'll check in on that, but.
I'd be happy to review that if they have something for you.
I, I don't know that it's required. So I guess, Kirsten, if you're okay with, you know, if, if this is approved by the commission, we'll, we'll proceed with, proceed with that.
Just, just so your action is clear, that you're authorizing what's included in those options. I think there was one and two, and then travel, I think on top of that, I think was the package, maybe.
Yep. So the, the total price for option two, for the number of hours that are included in option two, and the travel that goes along with option two is a total of three hundred and eighty-four thousand two hundred and twelve dollars for a two-year project.
Any other questions? Commissioner Kersky?
I'm going to make a motion and comment, if I may, so.
Certainly. We have a second.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Go ahead.
And my motion is for the option two. And option two is a project manager. I mean, it's, we are hiring them as a project manager for this, this whole. I mean, it's, we are hiring them as a project manager for this, this whole large process with so many moving parts, and I've been advocating for project management at, at the county level. We don't have a project manager, and you don't have the time or the ability to be a project manager for a project with this type of scope, so I'm happy to see that we're doing this, and it'll give us some experience, and, at least at this level, of working with the project manager and the benefits that are derived from doing such, so thank you for bringing this.
And to add to that, in addition to just traditional project management skills that Barry Dunn brings to this project, they also have consultants that have specific skill sets related to financial tax, HR payroll software. And so tho, those consultants were brought in as part of those needs assessment engagements and RFP engagements. So I, I kind of almost look at it as more than just project management, because they have those skill sets that, you know, really are able to dive in and ask the, the questions. I mean, they certainly gained our, our respect, if I can speak for the other folks that were on the selection committee.
My, my point is that project manager is the one that makes sure that all those people come to the table at the right time, with the right information.
And like I indicated last week, you know, you know, at the county here, you know, a lot of our, our departments are pretty bare-bones staff, so there's, there's not a lot of extra time to devote to these, so that, that kind of increases the risks on our behalf. And engaging with Barry Dunn helps us reduce those risks a little bit, and, and make sure that we, you know, continue to, to get those, those departments and those key staff engaged in this project, so we can have a successful project.
Commissioner Bender?
You know, just to comment on that too, I, I have to be, I, I was surprised at how much this costs, you know, as a percentage of the, you know, if you look at it as a percentage of the Tyler Technologies contract, it's a, it's a significant percentage. But I understand, in private industry, you know, even when you are staffed, th, these are very common to use these kinds of consultants to come in and do the management, they do testing, they, they make sure that the things are functioning appropriately, and it's a lot of man-hours, and so it's a little bit different than managing certain other projects, and, and given the fact that we have the history with them, I'm, I'm in favor of going forward with this, even given the costs that are involved.
Any other comments? I would say that in my little bit of experience with the project managers, this is a very specialized area, and having someone with experience in financial, accounting, the tax revenue issues, payroll, all those kinds of things, is pretty unusual to find somebody that has all of that in one package. And this is a one-time deal to get it installed and up and running and working, so that day one, when you turn the switch on, everybody goes yay, or runs for the front door and says this isn't what we were expecting. So we really have somebody that we put a tremendous amount of responsibility on, because if the systems don't work, we're out of business for, until I get up and running again.
Yeah, it's, it's a very, you know, it's a very critical project with dealing with systems that are, you know, core to, to the county's business, and so this helps reduce our risk, you know, a lot, and so I, I recognize that it's a pretty significant cost for the overall cost of, you know, of the project. And it is a lot of man-hours that they have in this contract, and there, there's really just no other way for us to get temporarily the, the skill sets and the man-hours that we need to help guide us through this project.
Thank you. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve the ERP solution with Barry Dunn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Item nineteen is a motion to authorize the chair to sign a resolution cross appointing Lincoln County regular and alternately mental illness board members to the Minnehaha County Board of Mental Illness. That's a mouthful.
And everybody has left. Nobody's quite excited when we got to the end of the agenda. Good morning, Carol Muller, Commissioned Administrative Officer. Before you is a request to cross appoint regular and alternate lay members of the Lincoln County Board of Mental Illness to the Minnehaha County Board of Mental Illness. In March two thousand and six, Minnehaha County and Lincoln County signed a joint cooperative agreement for consolidated mental illness boards. This process has worked very well, they are defined, and their powers are detailed in South Dakota codified law. Jim Osti, the Chair of the Minnehaha County Board of Mental Illness, requests that the Minnehaha County Commission cross appoint the following regular and alternate lay members of the Lincoln County Board of Mental Illness to the Minnehaha County Board of Mental Illness, those people being Janay Poppins, Sean Coestra, and Victoria Britson. The effect of this action is fully consistent with a joint cooperative agreement, and we appreciate Jim's work and Kirsten's work, and Robert, who actually put this all together, it was one of his last projects before he did. It just creates nice efficiencies.
And, and if I may, Jim Osti sends his regrets this morning. He planned to be here in person, but they had hearings this morning, turned out, out at Behavioral Health. And, and just to comment on this, this gives that joint board some additional flexibility to utilize Lincoln County resident members for Minnehaha County cases, basically. So this is just to add some flexibility to the composition of those joint, joint boards. I don't believe we've ever actually had to utilize them in the past, but just going forward, I know that was a cross request from Lincoln County that we'd ask you to adopt today.
Yes. We still pay for our chair, for our clients, our residents, Lincoln County still pays for theirs, but it just allows some efficiencies.
Correct.
If you're in working and you got one person from Minnehaha and the bulk from Lincoln, we don't have to call somebody special in for Minnehaha.
I'll make a motion to approve with the comment.
There, motion and a second, Mr. Barth?
You know, this was, I think, the very first joint agreement with Lincoln County where we corroborated. In fact, I was not in office at the time, but they had a joint meeting of the Lincoln and Minnehaha County Commission down in Canton, and I attended that meeting and stuff. It was really somewhat of a landmark, I think, and it's an example of, of, of us getting along and trying to be as effective and as inexpensive as possible for the citizens of our region.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes. Item twenty is an update of the legislative session.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, it is the last week of legislation, legislators in peer, except for the final day, if there's any vetoes or anything that need to come back for. So, and the next two days are set for, for consensus and committee hearings that need to take place to deal with those issues. So you've had in front of you a report that Robert's been updating each week for you. I'm not going to go over each of the bills, because they're either done, dead, or passed, waiting for signatures that are, that are out there. The one bill I know that we were quite involved in, that we were most concerned about probably was the alcohol tax of some changes in that that would reduce the amount that we would get, that we're getting for the very first time this year. That bill was sent to the forty-first day, so we don't need to worry about that one taking place. Otherwise, just a few highlights on bills as to what did pass and where they're going. There was an act to repeal the requirement for certain township, municipal, and school district fiscal reports to be submitted to county auditors. It's kind of a housekeeping detail that I think they get less reports now, that don't have to be necessarily filed with the tax, with the auditor's offices. There was one that I know that Commissioner Heiburger was quite involved in and is quite passionate about, as she sat on the Chief Justice's summer study last year, talking about mental health and looking at the impact of people with mental illness in jails, and them sitting there. This was HB eleven-eighty-three, an act to provide and revise certain provisions regarding mental health procedures in criminal justice, to make an appropriation therefore and to declare an emergency. And that one did pass both the House and the Senate. The Senate passed, it passed thirty-two to three, and we look forward to some implementations this year that hopefully will have some nice impacts on everything. Senate Bill seven was to revise the criteria for determining if property is classified as agricultural land for property tax purposes. A couple times you've had things come before you where that got changed, I'm trying to think of how to best explain this to refresh, but that changed the number of acres, and it comes, it'll do it, and I think that'll make it much more clear for the residents as to understand where they're going to go through and do, and make it a little bit more appropriate. For those that have acreages, it was that acres that fall into that. Senate Bill sixty-six was the riparian buffer strip classification, that, they made a run at it last year, it failed, this year it did pass through, that, those buffer strips that would be taxed at sixty percent of agricultural income value. One oh nine was an act to provide certain criteria for meeting the ownership requirements for classifying dwellings as owner-occupied bills. This one took laws, or took things that were in administrative rules, moved them over to law, in talking to our staff and elected officials, we were already doing it that way anyway, so there's nothing that affects us on that. There was one more that talked about the distribution of nine-one-one emergency surcharge revenue, and to revise the effective date of the sunset clause provisions. There were certain, some other things in there also about rulemaking authority, and we have a nine-one-one system that easily meets all the standards that are in place for that, and this one did go through and pass. We know that moving down in the future, we need to be continually aware of that nine-one-one emergency surcharge being sunset, this moves it back a year, so we will continue to monitor that and make sure that we have funding for our very effective and efficient nine-one-one system in Minnehaha County. Questions? As we put legislation together away for one more year?
Yeah, any questions for Carol? Thank you, appreciate the help. Item twenty-one is County Commissioner liaison reports. Do we have any, Commissioner Heiburger?
I have a whole bunch.
Okay.
I'll start on the top of my list, and that was, February twenty-third, Thursday, we had the kickoff for the triage meeting, and I would say there was probably about thirty people that attended that. We were, had a video conference with the technical support that will be helping us with getting that kicked off. And to dovetail off that, Aaron and I were able to meet, we set up a meeting with that particular staff in Washington DC, and we met with them for about an hour and a half and just talked about, get to know them face-to-face instead of just over a TV screen and stuff, and they're hoping to come later in the future, when we're closer to the end of our triage discussion. So that kicked off. In the last couple of weeks, I've attended a couple of different public safety assessment meetings, and we're also getting started with that, as they look at the charges and what would be included in felony charges according to the PSI that is standardized and the one that, South Dakota, how much, where we're, where we're at, so we can come up with a common ground on there. And then just to speak, oh, one more legislative one is the two-year study suggestion that we sent to the legislature on the Public Defender's Office, and that we wanted, I believe it was Commissioner Kelly that brought it forward, wanted to have the Public Defender's Office and how they were run in the State of South Dakota studied. That did not stick, it was brought forward, and they said they didn't want to do that. So they said, if, if we're going to do something like that, we're going to have to have a whole lot more information background to say, you know, why do we use this and why? Or why would we want this study done, and why would we want the state to spend two years of studying how the Public Defender's Office works in the State of South Dakota? So there's a lot more legwork to do if we want to bring that forward in future years. And then Jeff and I and Aaron Serska from our office went to Washington DC this last week for the NACO, NACO Association Convention. I went, Karen and I went a couple days early, because I sit on the Safety and Justice Board, and our meetings were filled with a lot of information, a lot of grant information, a lot of different ways to, public and safety opportunities, I guess, that are out there. Also, we did some resolutions on how NACO will address the legislature and what their goals are and stuff, so we had a few changes in there, and also, we also work with FEMA and some of the FEMA stuff that's coming down, so those were a lot of FEMA discussions too, in those two days of meetings. And then just a bunch of different, I'm going off the top of my head, because I really haven't had time to go through my notes, but I wanted to talk about a couple different things we have done. Aaron had set up meetings for us, we talked to data-driven justice people, we talked to the Arnold Foundation, and we talked to stepping up people, just making connections with some of the stuff we're doing in South Dakota, made some inquiries and some inroads of, you know, is there possibly more education or money that can come our way, grant opportunities? Aaron did find out about a week and a half ago, and she left this morning on another training opportunity that was completely paid, she's in Washington DC, and that has to do with one of our programs, I can't remember for sure which one, I think it's stepping up, but they paid for her airline fare, her hotels, and all of her training, and the conference itself that she went to for training is like over six-hundred-and-eighty dollars, so, and it was spur of the moment, she found out last week before we left, that they said we were going to pay for your trip to come. I went to a seminar on GIS, which was very interesting. It kind of dovetailed off of the opioid issues that are going on nationwide, and they talked about how in our GIS we could layer over top of our maps, specifically like what are our problem areas with law enforcement, and where are our deaths from drugs? And it helps you to see where your hotspots are and what should be done in those areas. You know, as mentioned this morning, we've had a couple of deaths now in Minnehaha County due to drug overdose. If you look on the national map, North Dakota and South Dakota are about the only place that haven't been devastated by opioids and opiums. It's horrible, and to listen to some of these other counties and what they've been through, one county in Florida brought newspapers and put them on our papers, and there was two front-page pages, and it was completely full of pictures about, an inch by an inch of people's faces, and those were the people that had died in two thousand and fifteen in that county, it was two complete pages, and they said for sixteen, they now have three complete pages of little tiny pictures of the people that have died from overdoses. They said, so there's a national movement going on, on, you know, how to address this, and there's some lawsuits that have come down from different counties that have been suing pharmaceutical companies for their ignoring the fact that they knew that it was an addictive product, and you could be addicted within two weeks, and the people that have been dying from it, and so, I, I don't remember which county, but there has actually been one county for sure that has been successful in suing a pharmaceutical county for the deaths. There's another overlay you can do on your, on your GIS that you can, there's a way for government agencies to find out which physicians or which entities are prescribing the highest amounts of those particular drugs, and so you can have all that information, and there's ways to, for us, us to get at our law enforcement or whatever. So I, I have some things to bring forward to the GIS people here. Grant opportunities, I said, I guess I mentioned that. There was another one that I went to that was on faith-based work, and it was a guy that came in, and he's doing work in another state about bringing faith-based people together in a, in a room, in a group, and saying how, how can you help governments as faith-based people? What kind of work can you bring us? And they're working with housing and with feeding, and we have a huge faith-based community, and I, I think they all do things alone, some of them do them together, and maybe there's a better way to bring some of that all to one room and say, how can we work together on a specific project? Anyway, it was, it was very interesting. And Jeff was there, and him and I went to different things, and so I don't know if he's got any comments. I kind of put you on the spot, because you haven't had a chance probably to look at it either.
No, you're giving me a blank check. I can talk. If, if you're, if you're ready, let me go.
I think so, because I was, this was off the top of my head.
You know, off the top of my head as well, and, you know, honestly, it's not just the, the seminars that you go to, it's also the interaction with commissioners and county officials from across the country. I, I went to a homeless thing, and they asked for a show of hands, how many counties have homeless encampments yet? And they said, well, if you don't have one, you're probably going to get one. I mean, this is something we've not contemplated yet, I don't think, and yet at the same time, I know that we've had sex offenders camping in the woods that killed each other in a drunken stupor, encampments. I went to a thing, I think Cindy was there too, on joint purchasing, where potentially we could buy everything from Amazon or something, and going along with other counties, get things at decent prices. I went to a thing on international trade, I talked to a guy from Canada, and, you know, obviously Canada is within trading distance. Another fellow was there from Chile, not quite as easy, and then there was a woman representing all of Africa, which is like sixty-three countries, four times the size of the United States, seemed a little bit of a stretch. But they were mostly interested in exporting to us, I would say, and not importing our products. I, there's more to talk about, I, I was at a group talking about the Antiquities Act of nineteen- I, there's more to talk about. I was at a group talking about the Antiquities Act of nineteen oh six. Everybody raise your hand on that. That's where Teddy Roosevelt got this going, and the President can virtually unilaterally declare a bunch of federal land to be a national monument. And Obama, on his way out, declared millions of acres to be national monument, which means that you can't build a rail line through there. You can't build a high-power transmission line. It reduces the options for folks in that area. And of course, most of this stuff is out west. I think eighty-five percent of Nevada is federal land. They cannot seize your land and make it one of these things, but if they already own the land, and, you know, the fellow speaking was not speaking in a partisan way when he talked about Obama. He says, you never know if we're going to have the greatest national monument declared in the next few years. So it's an issue, and there's no, there's no way to challenge these declarations by the President. There's no legal process that they have to go through to get public input. They can just take that federal land and say, boom, it's the Barth National Reserve. Anyway, obviously, there's a lot more we can talk about, but it was, and I will review my notes and come back with an extended, revised and extended remarks. Wait, we did meet with our legislators as well.
I have a couple more things I want to add.
Go ahead.
Erin and I were ma, he's talked about meeting different people. Erin and I were able to make contact with a gal that I already knew from Florida and another gentleman from Texas to set up training for our triage group to go to. So that was super exciting. It just kind of came, stumbled upon that that they had some of the leading triage centers in the state of South Dakota. And so she already has made those connections with those and started working on getting those plans made. So that was really exciting. One of the FEMA ones I went to, they talked about droids and the need for ordinances about the droids. And one of the things they brought up is to think about anyway, is not letting your little airplanes fly over top of a parade, or, because what could they drop? Or, they gave a whole list of large entities. They said, you shouldn't be letting people drive, flying over them without some type of restriction because you don't know who's flying over them and what might they possibly drop in an area of congregated people. That was interesting. And Jeff touched on the, on the community purchasing. And with Amazon, they will do all the contracts. All the contracts are already done. And then at the end, they'll give you a printout of, you know, for your auditor's office. So all of it's in a neat little box in a row. So it just saves time for your staff here because it's already, all the government paperwork has been done for you, and they can also go down to per department and say, this department ordered this much stuff, and they're over their budget that you gave them. So it's really, and it's offered free through NACO. So it's definitely something I think we'll be looking at as we talk about combining things. It was also very good. And I could prob, and, sorry, and he also said, we went to the legislature and we spent a morning up there talking to everybody and talked about state issues, local issues, and national issues, because part of my NACO responsibilities are to bring those resolutions forward to our congressional delegates, and so.
Or later.
Thank you. Anyone else, Commissioner?
I'm only going to take about a hat, no, just a minute here. Tomorrow is the library board meeting. I can't attend because I'm going to be at the Metro Communications Board Meeting that got moved. But I did review their, some of their material, and I talked to Jody Fick, our Director of Libraries, and I noticed that our circulation was up by like almost forty percent, which I thought was a huge number, and I asked her about it, and she said, yes and no. She said, one thing that the library did, a change that they made recently in the last sixty days, is that if you have a library item checked out and it's coming due to be returned, they will check electronically to see if anybody else has requested that item. If they, if there are no other requests for it, you're automatically renewed for three weeks. So it looks like, you know, a huge increase. Well, the advantage to the taxpayer, the person that's, you know, goes to the library, is that it's due and it's automatically renewed. It's not, you're due, now you're past due, now you owe the library money. You're not going to be fined right away. So you are given an automatic extension. I thought that was pretty neat.
That would have saved me some money over the years.
Exactly.
The other thing, Kaylee Branch Library just reopened after a one-point-one million dollar remodel, and their attendance is up. She didn't have specific numbers, but she said their attendance, their usage of that library is way up. So, and it's a beautiful library. We had a ribbon cutting there a few weeks ago, so. For anybody that hasn't been there, I encourage your attendance, sir.
Anyone else? Any new business? Any old business?
That's not about you, Mr. Chairman. I was, just, we had a crowd here today. And actually, this is smaller than we've been getting in our planning sessions, okay? And we set up extra chairs and all that, and still this is insufficient for what we get when issues like water towers are being discussed. And I just wanted to point that out again, that, you know, we lost our overflow space and it's, it's a little tough when you have thirty people in the other room waiting to come in and stuff, and it's, sorry about that.
Any other comments? Old business, I just briefly want to say that, while some of you were gone and I had a tough time catching up with everybody, but we've had three large projects that we're working on right now. One, obviously, is the jail project. We're working on the triage-related issues and the Arnold Foundation with pre-trial services. So I divided up a little bit those projects so that we would have representation in all of them. Commissioner Hiebarger and myself will be part of that pre-trial service issue with Rapid City and the Arnold Foundation. Commissioner Kerski will be involved at the triage center. And Commissioner Barth and Commissioner Bender have the little project of the jail. So, and if there's, for whatever reason, if you can't go to one of those meetings, give one of the other commissioners a call so we can constantly stay in touch with each other on those. Other than that, I don't have anything to report. We do need to go into executive session for personnel and contract.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into exec session for personnel and contract. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We'll start in five minutes.